I couldn't figure out what that is. It's your chair with.
My chair.
Good evening. We'll give Catherine a few more. Oh, there she is. Right on the button. All right, I've got seven o'clock and the board is all present. The meeting is called the order here from public. Paul, did you have anything from the public? You're muted?
No, I'm good. Just here to pay attention for now. Thanks.
First selectance briefing. Just a few things. The Town Hall DPW Union Proposal Contract was ratified by membership on the twenty sixth. And we are awaiting arrival. I'm hoping to have it by Tuesday. Of the written draft from the union. I know Karen has been working on that with the Hartford folks, but I haven't seen anything yet. Trentco House remediation. We've got a price in from Nutmeg to remove the oil tanks. And the furnace. It turns out that furnace has asbestos in it. And we've got a price of eighty five hundred dollars to do that. I'd like to get that done sooner rather than later, but we can discuss that more and we'll we'll carry it on our agenda. Soils testing, wetlands delineation and completion of the B one hundred. We talked with Rick Zulik about that, who's a certified soil scientist. I talked to him over a week ago, actually it was two weeks ago. And I sent him a follow up email. He is going to be sending us a scope of what his recommendations are. And he's given me a figure and I've asked for it in writing. Again, it hasn't come in yet. He figures he can do that with the assistance of our Public Works Department with helping with some holes and things with an amount not to exceed a thousand dollars.
Bill, what is the what is the B one hundred? You referred to that and I don't know what that is.
Yeah, the B one hundred goes in and does an evaluation of our existing septic field. And
So you're talking about at the Trentco House?
Trentco House Post Office, yes, whole post office.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's all I needed.
And I I have talked to Eastern Highland and they're happy to assist us with that and they're they're willing to go ahead once we feel comfortable. Note Memorial Hall. I'm recommending that we go ahead with the gutter repair. I know we got some costing in for eleven thousand dollars, but it was for smaller gutters. We've got a legitimate firm who have check references on and has come in and gave us an estimate of thirty five hundred dollars. And that would be including patching, sealing and warranting all the work for a minimum of a year. Plus put the protective coverings over all of the gutters themselves. And my feeling is we should go with that. It's well below what we've budgeted by.
What was that price again?
Thirty five hundred.
But it's only guaranteed for a year?
A year guarantee. They've also done work on several other of our sister towns here and and they all seem to stand behind them, so.
Is it that same kind of work? Were they patched?
Yes.
Existing gutters?
Yes, yes.
What's the name of the company again?
Catherine, I'll have to get it to you. I don't. I didn't put it in my notes.
All right.
I had Public Works get us three different estimates. One was an eleven thousand, another was a ten thousand. And this one came in. So I I'll send that off to you. Senior Center, I I met with their president and ASCO's president and their secretary. And they've asked to be on our next Selectman's meeting, which is next Tuesday, a morning meeting. I thought it was a productive meeting that we had today. And we can address that at our next meeting, but I told them that they'd be welcome to come and address the board.
Do you know what they want to address us about?
Working communications between the town, ASCO, and Senior Center. Working together. That was the theme of our meeting today. The DPW has finished all of the shimmying and coating on Old Town Road and Hillside Road. I think that finishes is up for the for the season. We are finalizing costing for Note Memorial Hall on the ADA upgrades to the front doors. I'm hoping to have that finalized by the end of the week. And we're trying to get a couple more clarifications. As you know, we got two bids on the split units for the Senior Center. But I I spoke this week and last week both to Nutmeg and to Stafford Mechanical would come in and see if our generator will be able to handle those units. We had to do some modifications with the fire department when we went to split units. And I want to make sure we don't have any surprises at the Senior Center. So that's that's in the works. There's some other things to go over with you, but I think they're on the agenda. So I'm gonna I wanna move on unless there's any questions or anything. All right, item five, acceptance of the minutes on your agenda. It says of the eighth. And that's a typo. It should have been of September twelfth. And I believe you have those minutes.
So moved.
I'll second.
Are there any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Item six, hear from boards, commissions, and committees. Anyone to be heard from? Okay, Paul, no report from the fire department? You're muted?
No, not not unless you need to hear from Sammy and everything's I'm not saying that. It's all good so far.
That's good. I did think you you had mentioned something to me about the defibrillators and that.
Yeah, I wanna wait. Wait till I have the invoice.
Okay.
And it's paid. And then I'll actually I'll put that in writing to you folks because I think it's better that way.
Very good.
I just want to make sure we have it all in place before I.
I appreciate that. Thanks, Paul. All right, moving on, item seven, under old business, status of the Ashford School Program. As of the last time that I spoke to the superintendent Cindy, everything was going very smooth. There had been no glitches. And our population error with students taking advantage of that and parents is twenty two. And the reason it's a bit over the twenty that we said was the maximum. What they found, they had a couple of families that they only needed partial coverage like three days or two days out of the week. So they're still not servicing any more on a daily basis than twenty. But they are able to accommodate a few more students, so. I'm hearing everything well.
What is the what is the rate that they're paying for those partial? Week because we have the way we set it up was it had to be a full week.
Yeah. I haven't seen the rate breakdown. Of course, it's being all paid for by the Esser funding. There's no cost to the parents at this time. It's the schools essa fund are paying for everything.
So what you're saying is basically they're providing, we are providing free daycare because it's still under our domain.
That's correct, in partnership with the school, yes. And the employees are still being paid through our finance office. We bill back the the school and then they reimburse us from
Thank you.
From the fund. Item B, consider funding options relating to the initiation of the Ashford School Roof Project. Is still preliminary. We don't have that yet. I will tell you that the we got the costing bids in from the three architectural firms that met the statutory requirements for submitting proposals. And the next stage was the costing that went out to the committee today. And we're asking for them to review it. I was quite surprised in reviewing them the difference in the cost proposals. So I'm anxious to hear back from Jim and his committee on their recommendation and what they see in the differences because the cost, like I said, were rather alarming, the differences.
When will we? When will we be hearing from them?
Chris, did they give us a timeline?
Jim wants to give them enough time to review the cost proposals. And then they will discuss and schedule interview dates. He knows that we have, you know, that we want to award as soon as we can, but he doesn't want to rush it.
Okay, did you get a feel we're talking a week, two weeks, a month?
Probably two, three weeks.
Okay. Catherine, I'll talk with him and try to firm up on that. Let you know on Tuesday.
All right, thank you.
Update on transfer station upgrades. We are set to get into our initial issuance of our new permits and functions over there. The only thing that is not set up, we've met with Savage. And they are securing the Wi-Fi to coordinate with our computer that will be in the booth itself and be tied in with our system here with Chris's. But it's kind of touch and go whether that's going to be ready for Wednesday. So what we've done is we've made hard copies of both the real estate list and the motor vehicle list. And we'll be doing it manual and then transferring it to the computer once the computer is on.
So this is starting on Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Did we know that?
It's on the front page of the Citizen and.
We haven't gotten our Citizen.
Really?
Nope.
Most people I've talked to have got it. I'll have to double check and I could. Did you get yours?
Yeah.
Roger got his. I know I got
Wow.
I got ours, I think.
We were actually remarking today that it hadn't arrived.
It was either Friday or Saturday. We got ours at home. I know because it came in a little early. Yeah. I'll check what's going on with that. Okay. Approved renewal of an agreement for the provisions of the building official service contracts with Bolton. And I believe in your package that was there. Normally I would have just signed it even if we were talking about a few dollars difference. But I wanted the board to be aware. We're looking basically at a little over a twenty five percent increase. And they had sent the contract over with with the person who's taken Jim Rupert as our building official, Rich. For me to sign it. And when I looked at it, looked at the numbers, I was a bit hesitant and I talked to Jim Rupert about it and they've done an internal audit and those costs are actual costs that they're paying to their help, their pass-throughs to us. The difference ends up being we had budgeted this year and why I called Jim and told him I was a bit surprised that they didn't put it in when we were in our budget season. But what we budgeted for this year was thirty six thousand nine twenty three. And the new total is forty two thousand nine ninety four thirty six. Or fifty six rather. That difference is six thousand seventy one dollars and fifty six cents. I've got no complaints and and have nothing but praise for the service and the work that they're doing down there in land use. And I understand Bolton cannot be spending their taxpayers' dollars on helping us if these are in fact pass-throughs. So I I support the new contract. Somebody have something to say?
I was actually, you said it was in our package. I don't. I'm not. I'm not finding the package.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
Chris sent that out. I believe it was attached, wasn't it, Chris? I'd looked at mine.
It was. It was sent out.
With the agenda?
With the agenda. And
Looking at the agenda on Friday?
Go down.
Didn't know there was anything on it besides the agenda. Thank you.
My my suggestion is to make up, we're presently have monies in our salary accounts, one for us replacing Cheryl's old position with a new position up there and also the floating position that we are going to be hiring here for Town Hall. In that position alone, so far we've accrued about a six thousand dollar allotment that we have not, excuse me, a twelve thousand dollar plus allotment that we have not expended. So I think we have the funds within that line item to make up this difference. If the board wants to consider this and we carry it till next Tuesday before we make a decision, I'm happy to do that or or to hear what you folks have to say about it. I did talk to Jim and he says, well, maybe we could split it over a couple of years or whatever. So I mean, they're willing to work with us, but they they can't eat this. They've got to make up the difference.
So just does the does the contract include specific office hours or expected turnaround time for requests?
It it
I'm not seeing the contract. Bear with me. Or it's really short. But okay. Well, we can talk about this in our next meeting then.
Is that with the board, Roger? You're comfortable? We'll just we'll just carry it on the agenda. Very good. And think about what I said. I I mean, we have some options there, but I I'd rather get it behind us.
You're you're talking about options for payment but not options for service.
Right. Yeah, I've got no calls to change any of the service or the hours or whatever, the hours, pass-throughs or whatever. The as I read the contract, it pretty much mirrors, except for the difference in the cost, exactly what the the last two contracts with them have called for. There's no differences, but take your time, read read them. And if you'd like to have us send you a copy of the old one, we can do that too to the board. All right, new business board and commission appointments. I don't have any. Are there any recommendations?
I don't have any.
We have. We have one for the Economic Development Commission. Nathan Thaler, who was recommended by the commission.
Do we have any kind of a letter or anything from that person?
It's in the packet.
Okay. No, this is from my Gantic. I wondered if we you're with me.
There is a letter from Margie. There is an email from Nathan Thaler. And underneath that, there is a response from Margie recommending the appointment.
Okay. What is the there's not a term to this appointment. Is that correct?
I I think it doesn't it run co-terminus with the Board of Selectmen?
No, they expire in February. These I they have two vacancies that expire in February of twenty twenty five.
Okay.
I'd like to move this individual be appointed.
Is there a second?
A second.
This is for Nathan Thaler.
Thaler, sorry.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have a, I saw some other correspondence, Chris, about somebody that was hoping to serve on the our town, our future. But I believe we need a recommendation from EDC on that because if I'm not mistaken, our town, our future is a subcommittee of the EDC. Is that right? Chris?
That's that's what the minutes when they were appointed show.
Okay. Well, I'll I'll talk to Margaret. I've got a meeting coming up with her this week, so I'll mention it to her.
So let me make sure I understand this. So we're doing an appointment. And they're doing an appointment?
We're, we did an appointment for EDC for this Mr. Thaler.
Yeah, for EDC.
And and we had a email come in we had a email come in for a lady that wants to serve on the, our town, our future. Typically, because they're a subcommittee of the EDC.
Right.
Recommendation from the EDC for that person.
And we don't have that yet?
Right, and then we would move on.
All right, thank you.
All right, do we have any tax refunds?
Lots.
I don't like to hear that. All right. How about it?
Before you start, do you have a total on that?
Of tax refunds?
Yeah, because there's a lot.
Eight hundred and eighty seven dollars and ninety two cents.
Thank you.
All right. These are all tax refunds citing CGS twelve dash one twenty nine. Laurel Bean in the amount of eighty five dollars and eighty nine cents. James Bartle in the amount of a hundred and three dollars and twenty eight cents. Robert DeVito in the amount of two hundred and forty four dollars and seventy five cents. Barbara Malady in the amount of ninety six dollars and forty one cents. Dylan O'Leary in the amount of a hundred and forty nine dollars and forty eight cents. And Ignis Ignisia K Sims in the amount of two hundred and eight dollars and eleven cents.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Item C, under our new business, Conservation Commission Presentation Re-Interruption of Zoom Meetings. I believe Loretta was going to join us.
I thought she was, yeah.
All right, well, we'll remind her perhaps Tuesday if she wants to join us. What I understand
I can speak, yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
I can speak briefly to this. I will, I have had some conversations with Mike about Zoom meetings and what our options are for this. And when we do have Loretta on, we can, I can go through those with her. Or if Mike happens to be on the, on the meeting. Because he and I've explored a, a number of ways to try and be able to have the chair take control of the meetings, the Zoom meetings. And that's not an easy process. So rather cumbersome and there could be some security violations in that. But I can go through that during that meeting if Mike does not.
Okay, I mean, the one thing that I do remind everybody, and I, I'm not sure it was done on this last thing. I know unfortunately, it was many of us were the victims of the, what happened at the school with the Board of Ed a year, over a year ago. With the pornography and that is that these things really need to be reported to the authorities. I did hear that the same night that that happened to the Conservation Commission, there were several other municipalities or boards in other towns also hacked. So it's a problem.
It was all at the same time and there was actually a different video in Wellington. So, but it was of the same content.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's a serious issue.
Well, what's interesting is that they were all happening at the same time. So it was some kind of coordinated effort.
Doing, yeah. All right, item D, agenda items for upcoming Board of Selectmen meeting or meetings? Anybody have anything special? Just remind everybody that is a regular meeting on Tuesday, so something does come up, we can always add it to the agenda. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion at seven twenty five.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Have a good night, folks.
Thank you.
All right, everybody.